So that's sort of a long-range blueprint of what we have to look out for and what we're going, what we're kind of monitoring in the next few years. But in the interim, we have our draft, our draft action plan for what we're going to do for the next five years. It's going to be available on the city website and in the engineering office from July 2nd through August 3rd. It'll actually stay up there afterwards, but comments can be received during that time period by engineering. And we'll direct the rest to staff if they receive any comments to let us know as well. Any questions?
Just, just one from, from me. What is the next action step for council on this?
I don't believe you have another action step on that.
So we don't have to, we'll do this, this is, we're going to do this resolution authorizing you to...
That is related, but not directly related to this.
We have two HRSD agreements. One allows us to do nutrient credit trading. And the one that you're doing, the other agreement that you're looking at tonight is, is solely directed right now at the consent order work that you're doing for those sanitary sewer overflows. Yes.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And the public hearing is open to our citizens in the month of...
Anyone can submit comments on the plan.
Yeah, it's a public comment period. And anyone can call the engineering office or email Ellen. You can see her email address up there. And we would be pleased to get any comments for the next 30 days or so, beginning July 2nd.
Very good. Any other questions of council? Okay, thank you, Ellen. All right, council, we have, I guess I got the next one. Audience for visitors, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address council on any issue? Seeing none, I say that kind of abruptly, but only staff is sitting here in the audience at this point in time. So, so I don't have any speakers for audience for visitors, so I'll close that item and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of May 29th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. We approve the minutes of our last regular session. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Now, next item of the, next section of the agenda is new business. And first item under this is the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a first amendment to the HRSD regionalization memorandum of agreement.
Ellen will briefly summarize the change and, of course, be ready for any questions you may have.
Okay. As I said just a minute ago, good evening again. As I said a minute ago, you are participating in two regional agreements with Hampton Road Sanitation District. The one you, in 2014, council authorized the city manager to sign a memorandum of agreement for the regionalization of work needed to increase capacity in both local and HRSD sewer systems in order to prevent wet weather sanitary sewer overflows. At the time that agreement was written, we were not anticipating the SWIFT program. HRSD had not considered nutrient and sediment credit trading for, with localities for stormwater. And in addition, the federal, the federal regulators had not started reviewing the regional wet weather management plan, which is the plan that this agreement would help accomplish. So as a result, when the review started and preliminary comments were obtained, when nutrient credit trading was envisioned, it became apparent that the original 2014 memorandum of agreement had to be modified. So this agreement, which basically states that local governments will continue to do a very rigorous maintenance program on their sewers and will do, make immediate repairs, while HRSD will come in and make larger capacity-related basin-wide improvements, needs to be modified to include SWIFT. And the other thing this memory, this amendment will do will speed up the timeline at which HRSD will start coming in and be responsible for making those basin-wide improvements. So that timetable has moved forward. And those are basically the changes that the agreement, or that the amendment will allow.
Okay. Thank you. You got a question?
No, just, Ellen, just briefly for the people listening at home, would you explain what SWIFT is?
SWIFT is the Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow. There are sewage treatment systems all over the country, and as a matter of fact, all over the world, that take that treated water from the wastewater treatment process. They take it and clean it past or to drinking water standards, and they also treat it so it kind of matches the chemistry of the existing groundwater. And they inject it into these deep aquifers. HRSD is proposing that in the SWIFT program, and the Pecosin City Council considered that in her presentations on it last year. The advantages to doing this are twofold. The treated wastewater is not going into the bay, so you're reducing the nitrogen load on the bay. In addition to that, we have a problem in this region with land subsidence. The aquifer is becoming compressed because there's less water in there, and the land is sinking, which helps with sea level rise. It helps, or it helps increase sea level rise, recurrent flooding. By injecting the water in, we're helping the environment in terms of those nutrients, and we're also hopefully helping slow down or reduce the amount of subsidence we're going to see in our land. So it's a twofold improvement. And HRSD has proposed that as one of the early steps in the consent order work.
Thank you. And you get an A for all of your acronym work tonight.
[laughing].
You got them all. I think you hit them all right on. Let me say before I ask council for a thing that, that working in parallel, and my hat is off to Ellen and as the engineering staff for the most part, but in working with HRSD on these many things that have benefited the city of Pecosin, I know people have seen their HRSD billing slightly increased to cover many of these things. What I would tell you is that that's far better than us trying to do it here locally. And we really appreciate the regional approach and your guidance in all of these things, everything from land subsidence. HRSD has been to us many times and briefed us, and it is exciting to really listen to what HRSD is doing to, to protect the overall environment. So my hat is off to them. And with that, council, I'll take a motion to, on this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into the first amendment to the memorandum of agreement for regional wet weather management sanitary sewer work.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. We approve this resolution authorizing the city manager to sign this document. Any questions or comments? Evie, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, very good. The next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bay Electric Company Incorporated for the construction for the addition of diesel-powered emergency generators to four existing sewage pump stations.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. We approve this, getting into this contract with Bay Electric also. Questions or comments of council? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, very good. The last item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the various boards and commissions. Is somebody prepared to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to various boards and commissions with the following names inserted. For the workforce development consortium, unless one of my fellow colleagues is, has a burning desire, I will volunteer to continue in that capacity. The Colonial Behavioral Health, Cynthia H. Spitzer. And for the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission, for the regular member, Randy Wheeler. And for the alternate, Thomas Gooding. The terms, the work development workforce would end June 30th, 2019. Colonial Behavioral Health would be June 30th, 2021. And the two appointments for the Juvenile Detention Commission would end June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second that we fill the boards with those folks. Any questions or comments? Buddy, we do appreciate you serving in workforce development. Randy, we know that you have spent a lot of time with the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Center.
I did.
I know you do. And in fact, they've come to us and let, let us know how much you've helped them with their budgeting. So really appreciate that. So, and, so is there any questions or comments? Evie, please.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aha.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Very good. Comments to the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, three items this evening. I just, you had spoke a few minutes ago, Mayor, about the work that Ellen had helped spearhead on our behalf with the regional wet weather, this, the consent order and SWIFT. All of that's true. I would note to you too that, that Bob Speechley and Wayne played an important role, particularly in the, in the regional wet weather and the consent order. That was a regional effort of utility folks, engineers, people like me, and attorneys. It was, the whole region put their, put their, their big, their big team on it. So anyway, they also played an important role. I just want to point that out.
Very good.
I'm pleased to share with council that our, our efforts towards the phase one bond borrowing continue right on schedule. We went recently to the bond rating agencies, and I'm happy to say that our existing bond ratings were reconfirmed at the same level. That's triple A for S and P and double A two for Moody's. That's what we had before, and it's what we will continue to have. The bond sale itself is scheduled for later this week, and closing on the proceeds will be next month, all of which is on schedule with what Mr. Laux explained the last time he was here. he was here. And finally, Tanya asked me to do an infomercial just to remind council members that you have at your place the adopted budget, which is not too dissimilar from the proposed budget. So you have it. If you would like us to assist in recycling any of your old documents, please let us have them next time you're here. We'll take care of that for you if it's convenient. And know that we have copies of all these documents in the library, the finance office, my office, and online as well. So if any citizen would like to see them, or you'd like to reference them three years from now, know that we have them as well. Depends on the size of your bookcase at home. But know that whether or not you recycle them, we'll have one for your reference at any time you need it. And that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Bud?
I would just like to welcome our new employees to the city, and I'm certain they'll do a fine job, and we will really appreciate their efforts. Thank you, Gene.
Jenna?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I have nothing.
Okay. Councilman Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to express publicly how thankful I am that the city of Pecosin received from the state of Virginia both grants that we applied for in support of our school resource officer program. And this will ensure that we will have resource officers in the high school and the middle school starting this school year in September 2018.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Green?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, if I could, three things. One, the workforce development related. We're in the process of revamping that whole organization, and I think it'll be something for the benefit of everybody. For years, the consortium and the private sector have had two separate bylaws. It's made it difficult in approaching businesses to join, that, you know, they see this separation, well, we're going to combine the bylaws, and we're going to be advertised as one unit, which I think will be great. We're also talking to our South Side partners, Opportunity, Inc., with the idea that we won't merge with them. We'll both retain our separate identities, but perhaps have an agreement with them that we will cooperate, share programs, share federal funds. They are just in the infant stages of doing what we've done for years, and that's going to the private sector and having a per capita input of monetary funds from the cities. They are just now starting to do that. So we can help them with that. They can help us with a lot of programs that they're doing. I think it's going to benefit the, the organization greatly. And I had the privilege of representing you at the HR TAC meeting. They reviewed all the projects that are going on in our region, especially the HRBT, it's moving forward. All those projects are ahead of schedule, especially the I-64 widenings. The two that, the one that's finished, segment one, was finished way under budget, which saves us quite a bit of money. Section two is under budget to date, and looks like it will finish, even though they lost a lot of time because of the weather, it looks like they will finish on time. And if they continue the way they're going, they will be under budget. And of course, segment three is being advertised at this time. So everything's moving along fine at HR TAC. We also, in our consent agenda, voted to adopt the Public Private Transportation Act into our operation. So if HR TAC gets a proposal from somebody for something that we've always wanted, or the transportation requirement that we've needed and, and not advertised, we can entertain that. Or we can go out and seek bids for projects that, that they have money for. So things are rolling along fine with those two organizations. Just like to remind everybody that the Food Bank Distribution is tomorrow at the Old City Hall from 10 to 1, and the Pecosin Lions Club is our host, so.
All right. Thank you, Buddy. Councilman Canelo?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I don't really have anything else to add. You covered the bond rating, that was great news, so I think we're on track, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion made in second, and Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Very good. We are adjourned.